The meeting of the Aurora City Council for May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four is hereby called to order with a clerk please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bead.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin is present.
Is there most approved appointment of the sergeant at arms for this meeting motion may be ordered. Smith second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries by voice fold. Mr. Muhammad.
Yes, tonight, Mayor, we have leading the pledge of allegiance. The state champions, give a big round of applause to the Warriors Hockey Club. If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Followed by the invocation which will be delivered by ward nine Alderman Edward Bug.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you this evening. And we ask you to bless us, bless us in our decisions. Bless us in our conversation. Bless us in our discussion. May it push forward. The work and the will of the people and businesses in our great city of Aurora. Lord, we ask you to bless our first responders, police, fire. All those veterans who serve. Currently and those who have retired from the armed services. Lord, we ask you to bless us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Muhammad, do you want to proceed with the mayor's office community affairs presentations?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. When I stand over here today, we have a couple of presentations and we'll have my back to the audience. May, among many other celebratory months, is National Preservation Month. It's an annual celebration observed to raise awareness about the importance of preserving cultural, historical, and natural heritage. It's a time to recognize the efforts of individuals and organizations dedicated to protecting and conserving our shared heritage for future generations. From historic buildings and landmarks to natural landscapes and archaeological sites, preservation efforts play a crucial role in maintaining our identity. And so tonight, we present the annual two thousand and twenty-four Mayor's Awards for Excellence in Historic Preservation to community members who've gone above and beyond to set the standard for preserving their properties. Let's give them all a round of applause. Tonight's awards, I'm going to ask Mayor Irving to join us down front are presented by the mayor. Preservation Chairman Dan Miller, if he can join the mayor down. And our staffer here, Joe Morgan, who just does a yeoman's job of working with our preservation, will be right there in the center. Our Preservation Commission and staff, so we look forward to presenting these this evening. And we'll come right down to the center. Tonight, as you can see on your screens, we're going to honor a number of individuals who have just preserved these beautiful properties on the screen. The first recipient, the owner of four fifty-five Spruce Street. And if any Alderman, we call the streets, if you want to join us for your particular street, four fifty-five Spruce Street. Give a round of applause for Luis Lugo. Luis isn't with us, but just really briefly, the aluminum siding on the home was removed, exposing the original wood siding and trim. The front porch was repaired, including siding repairs, new front wood steps, and a new more historically accurate railing to match the porch columns. We'll get Luis's award to him. Our second recipient. Five oh one to five oh three South Lincoln Avenue, Juan Junior and Graciela Morales. Are they here? We'll give them a round of applause as well. The inappropriate concrete steps to this home in the near east side historic district were removed, and a new wood railing that is more appropriate to the style of the home was added in addition to other additions. The next recipient is four twenty-seven South Lincoln Avenue, Mark Robinson's here. There's Mark. Mark purchased the home in the nineteen hundreds and has meticulously maintained it through years, through the years. Recently, the home underwent a siding restoration that included major wood repair and replacement of the clapboard and wood shingles. The owner then painted the home in historically appropriate three-part color scheme that accentuates the shingles and decorative brackets. Round of applause for Mark Robertson, four twenty-seven. Thank you, Mark. Our next recipient, six oh three Palace Street, Jose Gabriel and Rita Benuelos. Are they here? We'll give them a round of applause for the work that they did. The aluminum siding was removed, exposing the original wood clapboard and fiscale shingles. The inappropriate shutters were also removed. It's a beautiful new renovated house. The next recipient is two fifteen Grand Avenue, is Maria Velazquez here. Give Maria a round of applause. She purchased her home in the eighties and has lovely maintained it through the decades. Recently, she's added the wood siding and wood window trim repaired, and then painted the house in a new three-part color scheme. Our next recipient, four oh four South Lincoln Avenue, Alfredo Leon and Flora Aguñiga. There we are. Four oh four South Lincoln Avenue. The aluminum siding was removed, exposing the beautiful wood clapboard on the first story, the shingles on the second story, and the fiscale shingles and the gables. The owners were meticulously ensuring that all of the aluminum was removed and the siding was repaired correctly. Corners molding and trim that had been removed have been added back. Another round of applause for Alfredo and Aurora. And for the first time this year, we're instituting a new award, the Lifetime Preservation Award goes to Jan Mengers. Icon here in Aurora. The Preservation Commission is pleased to present its first Lifetime Achievement Award that recognizes the long-term efforts of an individual who's made a substantial impact on the community and preservation in Aurora. We're pleased to present this award to first-time award recipient Jan Mengers. Her advocacy and commitment have spanned more than twenty years, and she's worked on so many, including her own private residence. A big round of applause for Jan Mengers. We are going to ask all of our recipients to please join the mayor and the Alderman back down front. If we can give them all a round of applause, those who are here. And if there are any members of the Preservation Commission, please join as well.
I didn't prepare any remarks, so this will be very brief. We'd like to congratulate all of our award winners, those who are here, those that aren't here. They've done a lot of work on these homes. So, please reward them again with another round of applause.
You know, and I, I know, you know, as, as we look at these beautiful, maintained and refurbished homes, that many of them, you know, are in the hundred, hundred-year-old category, are very close to it. You know, I, I know our Aldermen are very proud, you know, to, to be the Aldermen of homeowners who take such pride in their community and such pride in their ward. So I want to give our Aldermen an opportunity to talk about the importance of maintaining their homes and making them as beautiful as they are today.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I too have a home that's well over a hundred years old, so I know what it takes to maintain these homes. And I appreciate the folks in, in our area that, that take that extra step to not only fix their homes up, but do it historically accurate. I'm very happy with the leadership of Mike Seville, who I think is going to talk here in a minute, who helped to get funding back for these programs to help support the folks in taking care of their historic homes. So, thank you very much. And Mike?
Yes, I, I've been around for a little bit on the city council, and I've seen the growth of the historic districts. And when I first came to the council in nineteen eighty-five, we just had one, and that was in the southeast side. We eventually expanded to the west side and got Palace, Riddler Highlands, and Tanner District. And it's really made a difference in my ward, the historic district, and, and the stability that's created, the ability to have grants and loan opportunities for people to, to fix up their home. I don't own a home that's a hundred years old. But I can appreciate the beauty of it. My grandmother and grandfather lived on Lincoln Avenue, three hundred block down from Copley for many, many years. So they were actually in the historic district and appreciated what was going on there. So. Just want to thank all the people involved. Jan, you were part of the historic preservation director for many, many years at, at City Hall. You did a great job. And you really set the tone, I think, for the future as well, not only for our city, but for our neighborhood. We have Al and, and Fernando here as well from this Preservation Commission, and they do a great job volunteering. So, big hand to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do a group photo. We'll keep going to the right here. There we go. Another round of applause for all of our two thousand and twenty-four recipients of the Mayor's Award for Excellence in Historic Preservation. They'll have a reception tonight immediately following at twenty-three's Downer Place at the G A R Memorial Hall. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done. And now, you see, we have special, more special guests here with us tonight as they come in their jerseys. Ladies and gentlemen, it's always an honor to say these four words. The champs are here. Big round of applause.
Give it up for the Warriors!
These amazing young men, their coaches, their parents, you know, represent the Illinois West High School Hockey League, and the players attend Wobonzie Valley High School and Matia Valley High School. So we'll ask those Aldermen and Alderwomen who represent those schools to please join us down as we present them with their awards for clinching the state championship. And as we, the Aldermen will present the medals, the mayor will hand the awards. But let me share just a little bit. The Warriors Hockey Club varsity team won the two thousand and twenty-four Illinois State Varsity Combined Division Championship at the United Center on March thirteenth, where they defeated Chicago North in the two-to-one overtime victory. The team finished this season with an impressive forty-one and twelve record. Forty-one wins. This is the club's fourth state championship that they've brought home to Aurora. And the team is coached by an amazing set of gentlemen that we will recognize, and so many of the students received awards there as well. We're going to start with the adults who helped to lead the team. If manager Melissa Nafziger is here, come on down, Melissa. Assistant coach Chaden Rostowski. Assistant coach Dennis Lee. Special recognition for the head coach, who has served this team faithfully for thirteen years, clinching four state championships, and he retires this year after thirteen years. Big round of applause for head coach Jeremy Dombro. We're going to ask the coach to share a few words once we get all the guys down here. All right, and now we have these stars of the state of Illinois, the stars of Wobonzie Valley and Matia Valley, and the pride of Aurora. We have freshman number fourteen from Wobonzie Valley, Ethan Newburg.
Come on down, Warrior!
Freshman number twenty-one from Wobonzie Valley, Evan Spro. Don't believe he's here, but he is a sophomore from Matia Valley, number seventy-one, Tyler Belot. Sophomore from Matia Valley, number five, Jacob Morgan. Sophomore from Matia Valley, number forty-seven, Finn O'Toole. Sophomore from Wobonzie Valley, number twenty-three, Marcus Palmer. Sophomore from Wobonzie Valley, number eleven, Joel Pidgenowski. Followed by his brother, number eighty-five, Josh Pidgenowski. Junior from Wobonzie Valley, number thirty-one, Elijah Hulahan. Sophomore from Wobonzie Valley, number ninety-seven, Alex Wolfart. Junior from Wobonzie Valley, number nine, James Nafziger. Junior from Matia Valley, number ninety-one, Colton Richardson. Let me come back to James Nafziger. He was named the MVP of the state championship game because he scored the winning goal. Big shout out to James Nafziger, MVP. All right. Senior from Wobonzie Valley, number thirteen, Matt Alvin. Senior from Matia Valley, number fifty, we know him well, his family, Andrew Victor. Sergeant son. Senior from Matia Valley, number twenty-five, Will Harding. Senior from Matia Valley, number ten, Michael McLean. Senior, number twenty, from Matia Valley, Andrew Morgan. Senior from Wobonzie Valley, number seventy-six, Luke Peters. And rounding out the team, senior from Wobonzie Valley, number eight, Matthew Shields. He's a senior from Matia Valley, number thirty-five. He was named the Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois as the Illinois High School Hockey Player of the Year for the entire state of Illinois. Make some noise for Evan Ziegler! Now, we're going to ask the guys to come and stand on the platform behind. Let's make, let's give a round of applause for our state champions.
Come on, you guys can do better than that. The champs are here! Give it up for the Warriors!
We're going to turn it over to Coach Dombro, and if some of the guys can come get your hardware and drop it right in the front. If you can come get your trophy, we'll put it right in the front. Coach Dombro, anything you'd like to say about the team?
Uh, yeah, I'll be quick. Um, it takes a lot of commitment, um, money, time, resources from our parents, uh, our club, um, and then from the boys. Uh, it's a tight-knit group. Uh, a lot of them were on the team last year where we didn't have as much success. Set out with a handful of goals this year and pretty much accomplished all of them. It wrapped up with a, a trip to Nationals in Philadelphia in March. It's been a fun year, and for me, it's been a fun run. Thirteen years, I've got a small kid at home, um, and it's time to spend some more time with family. Hockey goes from August through May, right? So, um, I've probably coached over seven hundred games with this club, and it's been, it's been a pleasure. I teach at Matia Valley, so, you know, this has been, I have a home at Ogden and Seventy-Fifth. Aurora is, Aurora is a special place to me now. Grew up in La Grange, but, uh, this is, this is where I planted my roots, and it's been fun. So, give these boys a round of applause. They deserve it.
Before, before we turn it to the mayor, if any Aldermen or Alderwomen would like to share any comments to the board?
So guys, um, you know the old saying, once a warrior, always a warrior. My children are warriors. My family bleeds green and gold. I'm very, very proud of all of you. I'm always proud of the accomplishments our, our young, um, people do in our communities. So, um, thank you for sharing this moment with us, and congratulations again.
I would like to start by saying, go, go Mustang! Congratulations to all the kids and the coaches and the schools and the city of Aurora. Great achievement for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? We have a presentation of a special sign from the mayor before the proclamation.
So as folks come into the city of Aurora, they will know that the champs live here. The champs are from here. It'll be the Warriors Hockey Club. Give it up for the Warriors! Posted in the city of Aurora.
And now we have a proclamation on behalf of the mayor.
It is my honor to read this proclamation. For the two thousand and twenty-four Warriors Hockey Club Day, March thirteenth. Whereas the Warriors Hockey Club is dedicated to providing a quality program for the development of high school hockey athletes at the best possible value, providing its members a true meaning of teamwork, lifelong friendship, exciting physical play, and quality time together. And whereas Warriors Hockey Club is comprised of junior varsity and varsity team members who attend both Wobonzie Valley High School and Matia Valley High School in Aurora. And whereas the two thousand and twenty-four varsity team roster include Matt, Tyler, Andrew, Will, Elijah, Michael, Jacob, Andrew, James, Ethan, Finn, Marcus, Luke, Joe, Josh, Colton, Matthew, Evan, Alex, and, uh, and another Evan, Evan Ziegler. Whereas the team is coached by Jeremy Dombro, Dennis Lee, and Chaden Rostowski, Rostowski, and managed by Melissa Nafziger. And whereas this season, the Warriors Hockey Club varsity team continue to blaze its trail of excellence with a forty-one, twelve-season record and clinched the two thousand and twenty-four Illinois State Varsity Combined Division Championship at the United Center on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, where they defeated Chicago North in a two-one overtime victory, making history. Four-time champions in Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois. Yeah, that's, that's a whole lot. That deserves a round of applause. Wow. These guys are on point. So now therefore I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, do congratulate the Warrior Hockey Club and do hereby proclaim March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Warrior Hockey Club Day in the city of Aurora from this point forward. Let's give it up for the Warriors! The champs are here! The champs are here.
Big round of applause for our state champions. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Now, all the Warriors here in the room. We're about to start our regular.
We have one more.
Oh, we do have, okay, go, go ahead.
Uh, tomorrow is National Senior Fraud Awareness Day before we conclude. And our IT department, our Community Services Department, and Senior Services Division hosting a special Empowering Seniors Against Scams workshop as we work to protect our senior citizens to the event. Although the event is sold out, we look forward to recognizing and working with almost two hundred seniors tomorrow.
So events like this one is helpful for our older residents because it's gonna give them access to tools and resources to make sure they feel confident as they age in our city, to make sure that they don't feel like they're vulnerable. Make sure they don't feel like they are out here as a sitting duck. It's gonna give them tools to make sure they can prepare themselves and fight against crime and scams.
Seniors are more vulnerable to online scams and just because of that. They're a vulnerable population where maybe they haven't, um, kept up with technology or they're, they're not aware of the certain things that are, that are going on. The most common types of online scams in Aurora and pretty much everywhere are phishing scams. Um, another common one is where somebody will call and say that a relative or a loved one is in custody, maybe, um, especially in a foreign country, and ask for money to be transferred that way.
The city is working very hard towards it, um, especially cybersecurity being the division head. Um, I'll take the responsibility to spread a word about, um, cybersecurity.
And tomorrow, we'll spread that word about cybersecurity at the Empowering Seniors Against Scams workshop. Like to give a shout out to Leela Karimori for your efforts in putting this together, Katrina Boatwright as well. Thank you so much, ladies. We appreciate you. And then finally, to the council on Saturday, May eighteenth, is the annual police memorial ceremony at ten AM as we celebrate, celebrate National Police Week this week and honor those in particular Saturday, uh, those who lost their lives in the line of duty. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Let's go on to mayoral appointments before I dismiss everybody. Madam Clerk, you read the first item under mayoral appointments.
Twenty-four dash zero zero seven seven, a resolution authorizing reappointment of Mavis Bates and the appointment of Tim Palwi, Mariza Martinez, Cornelius Mack to the mayor's Sustainable Aurora Advisory Board.
There's been a motion to approve by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Uh, are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Read the next item under mayoral appointments, Clerk.
Twenty-four dash zero two eight five, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Eldon DeRazio to the civilian review board.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any question discussions on this resolution? There being no questions, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Do we have Mavis Bates, Tim Palwi, uh, Mariza Martinez, Cornelius Mack here in the room with us? Any of you guys want to stand up and be recognized? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for serving our community. It's Don DeRazio here with us in the room. Stand up, be recognized. Let's give a round of applause. With those reappointments and folks that are appointed to the new board, meet me down front so we can take a picture.
Another round of applause for our new board.
All right, folks, so now we're about to get on to the regular portion of our business here at the city council. Uh, you know, the fun part is, is, uh, the first part, we recognize our, our community. You know, whether it be our students at school, on our sports team, our folks that are, that are volunteering to be on commissions and boards for the city of Aurora. We appreciate everything you guys do to make Aurora the best city in the state, one of the best in the country. But I'd love for you to stay for the rest of the, of the, of the business. It's not as exciting as the first part. But for those that have to get out and I know get back to school, because I know you guys probably only got a couple of days left. You want to celebrate that until, until the summer. And those folks that are here just for the presentations, I'll give you a few minutes to file out before we start the regular portion of the business. If you like to stay, feel free to stay. Uh, and we'd love to have you, but I, I know you guys are busy, uh, this evening and want to get out and enjoy the rest of the sunshine and prepare for school tomorrow. So I'll give you guys a few minutes to file out. You're very welcome. Thank you. Take it easy, brother. You're welcome. Thank you. Cutie. It's your granddaughter? Oh, such, such, such a cutie. How old is she? Oh, she's such a cutie. Oh. Hi, baby. Hi. All right, so it seems like those folks that, um, wanted to exit council chambers have exited, and those that want to stay and participate in our, our meeting are, are here seated and ready to participate. So let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, and that is our public comment portion. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you call the first speaker, Madam Clerk?
Don Cavanato.
Ms. Cavanato, just going to step right up to the, right to the microphone, microphone, yep. You have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here to speak regarding the unfinished business agenda item number twenty-four dash oh one nine seven, a resolution to spend one point four million dollars on the construction of a new fueling station at the proposed public work site. My name is Don Cavanato, and I have lived in Legacy Fields Ward Seven, which is the neighboring property to that lot, for twenty years. I am urging each one of you to vote no on this resolution and make a new effort to find a better way to be a good neighbor. Putting a gas station on top of the residence is not being a good neighbor. For the record, I reached out to our newly appointed alderman in Ward Seven, Mr. Tolliver, regarding this matter, and he never responded. In fact, when this matter was before the committee he sits on, he did not ask a single question. Not even a question regarding any impact to the residents that live there. There was only one alderman that sits on this council that asked any questions. Construction of a fuel station with four massive fuel tanks to be buried at that site is the equivalent to putting a monster gas station on top of us. Legacy Fields with a hundred and eighty homes is the neighbor to the immediate east side of that property line. There are homes on Wellwater to the immediate west side of that property line, and you want to subject the residents to the risks and known hazards that go with living next to a gas station. This is the Circle K issue all over again, except somehow the city thinks we have forgotten all about that issue. Instead of a corporation bringing the gas station to the resident's neighborhood, it's the city. We just received our property tax bills, and our taxes went up over eight percent, and you want to put a gas station on top of us. This site is not centrally located and should not be used to fuel city trucks and vehicles. Find another location to fuel up, or the neighbors may need to sink, seek injunctive relief. Mr. Mayor, you said you would be a good neighbor. We haven't seen it yet. You got your zoning change despite the commission overwhelmingly voting with the homeowners. You crammed this building and salt domed through all while thumbing your nose to the taxpaying residents. You were not supposed to use Liberty with those trucks, but regardless, those trucks came through our subdivision and through Liberty to clear the lot. It's kind of ironic that the updated drawing shows two entrances off of Liberty, and they still say Liberty will not be used. You got all of that.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker, call the next speaker, Clerk.
Chuck Rolls.
Ms. Rose, if you don't mind speaking over, over that one, stepping over that one, which clears to work a little better. So you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good. Uh, hey, John. The only guy I trust up here since I worked with you for such a long time in the school district. Um, everybody was here during, uh, the Public Works, uh, fiasco when they got up here and said, uh, oh, uh, Public Works facilities are built all the time in, in residential neighborhoods. Well, you know what? They gave about nine examples on their map. I called each, each township, and none, none of that, none of that was true. Homes were built, neighborhoods were built around the already established Public Works facilities. So that was a big whopper that he, that he told, the Public Works mouthpiece that was here. Uh, and, uh, I have to say, we were, we were very disappointed in Ward Seven from our, uh, our Ward Seven. I won't make any disparaging remarks about her, but, uh, she didn't even vote for us. You know, she came to our meeting, said she did, uh, oh, yeah, we're, we're behind you. We want to have that built there. And, uh, you know, we made our, our case known, and you guys just ignored us. But we're, uh, you know, we're looking at it being built as Public Works dump site, and you all know it's gonna be a dump site because that's where the three or four were and are downtown by the river. They are dump sites. How would you like to live next to that? Anybody, uh, living Legacy Fields here that wants that next to them? Ah, no hands, okay. I'm shocked. You have properties by eighty-eight that you could build this fueling station. You don't need more than a couple of acres to put the gas tanks in. Uh, we have enormous wetlands we are surrounded with, and you're gonna stick tanks. And I mean, these are big tanks. This is not a normal gas station. This is gigantic. And you guys are gonna stick this in by us? I, I think you guys should reconsider because it's not safe. Tanks leak. You know it. And look at everything that's gonna be filled next to us. We're gonna have every car in Aurora, every tractor, every diesel truck, every diesel plow, everything backing up, all this beeping going on at night. The smell, the noise. Uh, we don't want that next to us. You guys, it's easy. You got all this land down by eighty-eight to put this in. What is, what is the problem with that? And it's not too late to go put it in there. You guys haven't put the tanks in yet. And, uh, and we don't want the traffic either. We have a ton of traffic. We asked for two stop signs on our Street of Liberty because they race up and down there. And what did we get? We got two crosswalks. So now the kids get to run through the crosswalk.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Mary Olson?
Thanks for nothing.
Please, please. So Olson, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman of Aurora.
Want to pull that microphone down a little bit closer to you? Right to your left there. All right.
Sorry about that. Um, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, and the Alderman of Aurora, thank you for your attention and your time. I think it's a shame, um, that we need to revisit the numerous health issues surrounding fuel stations, fueling stations. I brought this up when the Public Works facility was being, um, it, um, being planned, and, um, we talked a lot about the environment and what would be happen there. The biggest sin, I think, is that, that people are gonna be harmed by this. Um, the people you vow, you, you vow to, you know, serve and protect, um, need to hear what I have to say, and we will let them know. If you vote to build the fueling station, there is great risk of illness and death, possibly death, from the benzene that's gonna be in the air. This is, this should not be built anywhere near where people live, work, and go to school. They shouldn't be in, not, not a hundred feet away, not three hundred, not five hundred feet away. Benzene gets into the air, um, and it, it's impossible to remove. Remember Circle K? You did the right thing then, and you can do it again. You can do the right thing again. You have an opportunity to be heroes, to save our kids. Benzene especially affects children, and we have dozens of them in that area. There are schools along the roads. We expect you to protect us and have the courage to vote no to the underground tanks. Benzene again, which is found in gasoline and diesel fuse, has been classified by the International Agency for Research in Cancer and has been known for dozens of years as a number one carcinogenic. It is lethal. If the fueling station is built and forced upon us, benzene will, benzene will be in the air at unsafe levels. It's going to, um, you know, coming from the squad cars, the trucks, and all the vehicles that are idling there um, with diesel and, and regular gasoline. Um, they're driving in and out of the station. It's gonna settle on our skin. It seeps into our bloodstreams. It causes all kinds of cancers, and I'll get into that moment if I have time. Groundwater is at risk too. No tanks are guaranteed to be leak proof. Once, once one leaks, it's so difficult and timely and costly to clean that up. Um, we're going, we're actually going to, we could affect the aqua filters underneath, under the ground, can contaminate it. One gallon of petroleum can contaminate. One gallon of petroleum can contaminate millions of gallons of, of water in the aqua filters. As I, and as I give you a list of the cause of cancer, please remember children are, and the elderly are most affected by benzene. It's a horrible, horrible thing. You can go online, you'll see oodles of information. So the diseases that we are going to be exposed to are respiratory illnesses and lung diseases, chronic blood disorders, blood circulatory system disease.
Thank you, Mayor. Time has ended. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Vanessa Laveras.
Ms. Laveras, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Okay. I'm Vanessa Laveras. I am from the Stonegate, Carolina Stone Gates community on Indian Trail Road. Today, we had two wonderful speakers come, Mark Balyut and Vincent Nardoni from the, I had to write it down, Community Orientated Policing of, of the Police Department. We saw these gentlemen and some of the 911 responders this past summer at the Neighbor's Night Out, and they came, they talked to us, they said, we'll come and talk to your community anytime, and we were able to arrange it for today. They were a couple of minutes late because there was an incident going on at the, at the train station, but they came, they did a wonderful presentation. I'm trying to like lift the thing right now. So it, it was wonderful. We appreciated the time that they gave us, and I just want to thank the city for having such wonderful officers that were able to talk to us today. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda in full. Clerk, will you please read both agendas in full?
230959, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $258,461.25 from the Illinois State Police for reimbursement of next-generation 911 improvements completed. 240095, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development and approving the FASL Plan description for the property located at 1125 Aurora Avenue. 240096, a resolution approving the final plat for FASL subdivision located at 1125 Aurora Avenue. 240097, a resolution approving a final plan for the FASL subdivision located at 1125 Aurora Avenue for a retail sales or service use, restaurant with a drive-through facility use, and a gasoline station use. 240248, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A package sales, gas station, beer and wine-only liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from D A M J Team Incorporated doing business at 7-Eleven at 1202 North Eola Road. 240258, a resolution approving estimated payments in the amount of $122,000 to Macon County Law Enforcement in partnership with Richland Community College for police recruit training, lodging, and meals in 2024. 240260, resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase a three-year subscription for remote desktop connectivity software to Optive Security of Denver, Colorado for 240273, a resolution awarding West Hauling Landscaping and Tavaro's and Sons Lawn Care as the 2024 contractors with a possible two-year extension for lawn mowing services as a part of the special lawn mowing support program within the city of Aurora. 240278, a resolution authorizing the increase of $23,421 to the purchase price for the 2024 E1 Cyclone Custom HR 100 aerial truck for a total of $1,323,686. 240281, a resolution to award the Marion Avenue Lafayette Street and Seminary Avenue Sewer Separation Project located in Wards 3 and 4 to Performance Construction and Engineering of Plano in the bid amount of $1,027,780. 240286, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of bid pricing from various contractors for supplemental snow removal services and snow and ice control services for a two-year contract with optional two one-year extensions for the division of street maintenance. 240288, a resolution to award the Heathercrest Subdivision Water Main Improvements Project located in Ward 5 to Brand Excavating of Morris in the bid amount of $2,908,475. 240303, a resolution requesting approval to continue with Bentech Benefits Technology of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, as the city's benefits enrollment and administrate, and administration software provider, one additional year for an amount not to exceed $65,500. 240306, a resolution authorizing a change order to the contract awarded to Ultimate Cronus Group for a combined scheduling time and attendance solution in the amount of 240307, a resolution to award $243,686 to NTI National Technologies Downers Grove to provide an alternate fiber infrastructure route to the Fox Valley Habitat for Humanity Habitat Green Freedom Subdivision. 240332, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, April 23, 2024 City Council Meeting. 240335, a resolution accepting the dedication of Wright-Away for the proposed Peyton Circle located at 3100 Del Webb Boulevard, being south of Del Webb Boulevard and east of Eola Road.
Second. There's been a motion. There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Before we entertain those motions, they ask if there are any motions to remove any items from the direct to council consent agenda or the consent agenda, or any questions about any items on either agenda. There being none, a first and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, zero no.
The consent agenda and the direct to council, direct to council consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to the next portion of our agenda unfinished business. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under unfinished business?
24-0197, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to enter into an agreement with Crown Industries of Streamwood, Illinois in the amount of $1,383,869 for construction of a new fueling station at the new Public Works facility. So moved.
Second. There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion on this item? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two parts to this. One is my own thoughts on this project, and then my second is a potential question for staff. I did take a call late last night on this agenda item and then returned a call to one of the residents who lives near the facility and, and is apparently on well water, and he did speak with Mr. Wade, but according to him, our property is about three foot higher than his property, and he's saying that he's getting a lot of water runoff already, and that, you know, he can't even mow his grass without his lawnmower getting stuck in the sog. So considering building a gas station, this does bear some similarities to Circle K. What are we doing to mitigate the, the water getting on to those properties that are on well water?
Ken Scherth with the Public Works Department. I'll follow up with Ian on that particular case. I'm not certain if that resident is in the township on the west side or maybe the northwest corner.
Township. He did, he did say he's in township right off of Liberty.
Yeah, so in that corner of the property, what we did, we had to match existing so we could save about four tenths of an acre of walnut trees adjacent to that gentleman's property. So when we had to match grades there, and we wanted to tip the entire site away from his property towards our detention pond to the south so we don't exacerbate water issues in that walnut grove, what we did was tip the site to the south. So the only water that he would get is the small amount of the berming that it took to get up to an elevation to tip the site to the south. So we've, we've worked with that gentleman, and we've actually saved a lot of trees and dedicated a lot of property and preserved it to that, that corner. And then as far as the, the fueling station.
Hold on, before we go away from water on, onto his property, you know, it was brought up that there's currently water being, that is flowing onto his property. Have you talked to him and addressed that particular issue?
I believe we have, but I'll follow up with Ian on that. We've met out there in the field with him, with his property owner several times to go over both the tree removal and grading issues, and then also where we placed our fence.
So just to be clear, you could have done even more grading had you moved all, had you removed all those trees, but in attempt to try to save those trees backing up to his property?
Correct. Our original intent was to go all the way to the property line with our, with our allowable setback, which I believe is 15 feet at that location, and instead, we, we preserved almost a half an acre of walnut trees, if I recall correctly.
All right. Now to the issue of the gas.
Now, so the, the fuel station, obviously, this isn't going to be just for the Public Works facility. It's going to be for all of our rolling stock, our squad cars, our, our, our fire department, and our fleet repair center is right there. So to kind of back up on this, this has been in our capital plan for over six years now. We purchased the property in 2018. In 2019, the council approved us going forward with a preliminary design on the project, and in 2022, when we came forward to talk about the project and get final approval, the location of the fuel station was already set. And that location, to give you kind of perspective, is about, the, the fuel station canopy is about 600 feet from the nearest Legacy Fields townhome. And to put that in perspective, 600 feet, that's almost two football fields. And if you go down the street at Eola, New York, where there's two commercial gas stations, that's about 530 feet from the nearest single-family home to their, their dispensing canopy. Eola and Ogden, we've got gas stations there at 230 feet, 388 feet, and then at Ogden and Village Center, that's about 215 feet from that fuel island to the nearest residential. So again, we've been trying to be the best neighbor that we can by putting a, a good distance between us and our neighbors. But as far as the station itself, it's going to be state-of-the-art corrosion-resistant fiberglass tanks, double-walled with sensors inside that outer wall, as well as sensors inside the piping system, overflow protection systems, 24/7 monitoring, that it, it will be state-of-the-art.
And just to be clear, that, one of the speakers that stepped up and spoke said that these would be underground tanks. Are they underground or above-ground tanks?
Underground.
Okay. So explain if, how you stop them from leaking while underground?
Well, we'll have the two, two-wall containment system, plus above the tank farm will be a concrete slab that also helps with buoyancy. The, the, the tanks will also be strapped to an anchor system, and then, then the leak detection system is basically the belt and suspender's part of that.
You have a question? Alderman Lash?
Sure, I have my own statement, but I just really quick question, follow-up. You've mentioned 600 feet from Legacy Fields. How, how, on the other side, how far is it from the people on well water?
I'd have to guess it'd probably be about 900 feet. So it's, there's a little more distance that direction, if I recall.
And do you feel confident that there's no chance of gas runoff getting into that well water?
This fuel station would actually be tributary, if I'm correct. God forbid if there was a leaking tank on a truck. That, that water, that, that fuel would, one, be contained in a, in a small area designed to contain the amount of, minimize the amount of stormwater that heads towards this fuel station, but then if for chance it got out of that area, it would then go south towards New York Street, towards that detention pond.
So to answer his question with a yes or no, is there a chance that there would be some fuel leaking into somebody's, in the township, not in the city of Aurora, in the township's water, based on all of your checks and balances?
The way we've got, I do not believe so, and the reason I can say that is that the stormwater system is tributary to the south, and all the township areas on wells are to the west.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to follow up with more, more of a statement or question for you, which is...
Does anybody have any other questions?
Sure.
Any other questions from the council? All right, what is the statement?
Well, just that, the way I'm looking at this, we're paying $1.4 million to bury four tanks underground for an old way of moving around the, the country. And as we start to transition towards alternative fuel vehicles, it's going to be expensive, not only to put them in, but also to remove them. I would certainly be open to working with the department to move towards two above-ground tanks for a temporary solution, but for me, this is definitely a no vote for, for, voting for four tanks underground.
Any other questions or comments? There being none. A motion, second on the floor. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Read the next item, clerk.
24-0228, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant from Petco Love in the amount of $2,500.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Question or discussions on this item? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Read the next item.
24-0259, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to increase the purchase order for RC Wagman Construction Company, 750 Morton Avenue in Aurora, by the amount of $153,825 for bid package for shelving, which is part of the Public Works Combined Maintenance Facility project.
There's been a mo, there's been a motion by, hold on a second. Motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Before we entertain those motions, I believe Alderman Warman does have, do you have some conflict on that?
Conflict, potential conflict.
Potential conflict on that, so based on that, Alderman Warman will leave the council chambers. To record flag, Alderman Warman is leaving the council chambers for us to continue debate on this particular item. Alderman Warman has left. Are there any other questions or discussions on this particular item? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
11 yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Alderman Warman can return to council chambers. Alderman Warman has returned to council chambers. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
24-0304, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase CCTV devices from Scientel Solutions in Aurora for $15,247.38.
There's been a motion approved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any question or discussion on this item? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, I did receive the memo that was generated from the committee discussion on this item, but for, for more clarification, is Scientel Solutions a union company? Yes, yes or no?
Yes. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
10 yes, one no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved.
Could you, Mayor, could the clerk please reread the real call vote?
10 yes, one no, and one present?
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
All right. purchase a three-year subscription for license plate reader hosting services for $15,000, and a three-year subscription for LPR integration services for $72,000 from Motorola Solutions in Chicago for a total purchase of $87,000.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Question, discussions on this item? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I had asked in the last committee, the whole meeting, about if we, as a city, upload the names of people and their license plates who have either a previous criminal record or who are on the city's gang list. And I'm just curious if we could get an answer to that question. It wasn't answered at the last meeting.
Lieutenant Walcott, you want to step up and answer that? Counsel, if you have any, if you have to answer that question? You understood, you understand to answer that question?
Can you ask the question again? Lieutenant Walcott with Aurora, please.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Using these license plate readers, they flag people as they go around, take pictures of them. Do we have uploaded for flagging people who might be on our gang database or people who have a previous criminal record?
Hold on, let, let's correct that for a second. You said something that was totally off-base, that these people, these cameras, these people drive around, these cameras just take pictures of them. That's not correct. So state exactly what the license plate reader is for, what they read, and what the purpose of it for, is for, and whether it targets anyone specifically because they're on a gang list.
The license plate readers do not target any specific person. They take a photo of the license plate and the back of the vehicle, or the back of the vehicle with a zoom in of the license plate, and then it captures that information and puts it into a, a database that we can access and/or gives us alerts based on...
For what purpose?
For investigations of crimes, located, locating missing persons, wanted persons, people who are suicidal, stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, and, and then also for person suspected crimes.
Just to get perspective, since we have deployed license plate readers, can you talk about the types of crimes that have been solved and the, in, in other issues, criminal issues that have been addressed?
Yes, since we've employed the, the license plate readers, we've used them to locate people who have been involved in shootings. We've used them to assist in murder investigations. We've used them to assist in all kinds of different crimes, retail theft, you name it, across the board. We've, we've been able to use them successfully and help us clear cases and make arrests for violent crimes.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I don't believe you answered the questions that I asked, which was, in addition to the Amber Alerts and people that have stolen vehicles, do we also upload into that list and take photos and flag the people who are either on the gang list or who have a previous criminal record?
We upload, or, we, we flag persons involved and suspects in criminal activity. For example, if we have someone that's wanted in a shooting or look, we're looking for for a shooting, that may or may not include somebody who has a criminal history, that may or may not include somebody who is a gang member.
And then, I guess my other question will go to legal, which is, you had said during the last meeting that we don't videotape, but I had just heard Officer Walcott say that we do take photographs and add them to a database. Is that correct?
Those would be photographs, not videos. Patrick Collins with the Law Department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Being done, Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Call the next item.
Twenty-four dash zero three one nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor or the Aurora Police Department Chief of Police to enter into an agreement between the City of Aurora and Chicago Premium Outlets. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Any question, discussions on this item? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.